Good evening and welcome to Seattle City Club's District 7 City Council Debate. I'm your moderator, Daniel Beekman with the Seattle Times. With me are Natalie Swaby of King 5 and Eric Johnson of Como. Seattle City Club would like to acknowledge their presenting sponsor, Amazon, their supporting sponsor, AARP, and our host sponsor, Town Hall Seattle, for making this debate possible. And now, please welcome our Seattle City Council District 7 candidates, Andrew Lewis Thanks for being here tonight, candidates. We're going to begin the debate with 90-second opening statements by each candidate. Back in the green room, we flipped a coin to determine who would go first, and we'll proceed to questions from our panel here. We're going to do a lightning round of quick questions, and we're going to try to work in some questions from the audience before closing statements at the end. So, candidates, your responses will be timed, and we will cut you off if you go over your time. You're warned. And, audience, please hold all of your applause until the end of the debate. So, candidate Lewis, we'll start with you. And let me tee you up this way. Both candidates have worked in law enforcement. Candidate Lewis, you're an Assistant City Prosecutor with the Seattle City Attorney's Office. Candidate Pugil, you had a long career at the Seattle Police Department, were the interim police chief for a time there. But what's more needed on the council right now? An older homeowner with more experience, or a younger renter, more in touch with millennials? Candidate Lewis, first.
Well, thank you for that question. Thank you for having me, and thank you all for coming out here tonight to partake in this debate for the future vision of our city. Our city government is changing, and for the first time, four councilmembers stepped down this year and declined to run for reelection. It's clearly time for a new direction in this city. In the last few years, we've seen a lot of divisiveness at City Hall. We didn't have the luxury to wait then for action. We certainly don't have the luxury to wait now. We need to address the challenges our city is facing, and we need a sense of urgency to rise to these challenges. My friends trying to build a life here in the city are frustrated, and they're impatient. They're uncertain that they can realize the opportunities that their parents were able to achieve and to meet those goals in their lives. They're not sure they'll ever afford a house. They can't understand why they're stuck in gridlock in their morning commute, and they don't understand why so many of their neighbors are seen unhoused on the street without access to shelter. Why do we need someone from a new generation to be on the city council? Because we keenly feel these pressures.
Thank you. Candidate Pugil.
Thank you, and thank you all for allowing us to be here tonight. I've spent my entire life in the city, the last 30 years living in District 7. I walked a beat in District 7. I supervised, I was the precinct commander of District 7, and eventually Chief of Police. I feel like I've come full circle. I'm listening again to young families walking the sidewalk, listening to seniors, business owners, renters, and longtime residents. They want to be safe and healthy and productive, and everyone else as well. The fact is that we need strong new leadership in City Hall with the experience and understanding to hit the ground running on day one. I've led on issues that are talking, that people are talking to me about every day. I've built partnerships with human service providers to get people off the streets, into homes, into supportive care, and into treatment. In fact, I'm endorsed by many of their leaders. I've co-created award-winning drug diversion programs with non-traditional partners and to keep people out of jail and get them into recovery. We may have many of the tools.
Thanks very much. Just finish that sentence and...
Okay, okay. Wow.
Yep, the 90-second opening statements, and now we're going to move on to some more questions. Natalie.
Let's talk about housing. Should Seattle continue to allow developers to pay fees in lieu of including affordable apartments in their new projects? Why or why not? Candidate Pugil, we'll start with you.
I think that MHA is a good start. I think we do need fees. I think it's much more healthy for the people living in the building that's being created, and the people who are living around the area, to have mixed use, to have mixed incomes, to have mixed cultures. I've always found from policing neighborhoods that the healthiest neighborhoods are those that are mixed and not monolithic. I would strongly encourage all developers to have mixed-use homes, mixed-use housing, especially when we're doing, talking about density. We only have 83 square feet of land, or 83 square acres of land here in the city. We have to use it the best we can.
All right, thank you. Candidate Lewis.
You know, as I go around District 7 and knock on doors, I talk to a lot of people that are experiencing housing instability. People who are rent burdened, who are younger, like me, or people on fixed incomes who are older, have lived in Seattle their entire life, and property taxes are forcing them out of their house, and they need action. They need affordable housing in every neighborhood that's on-site. I think that affordable housing needs to be in the building, not with the in-lu fee. That affordable housing, I think we should provide an incentive. If you look at other cities, San Jose in California, they provide an incentive. They say, "Look, you know, if you want to pay the in-lu fee, you get less of a benefit. If you're going to build that housing on-site, we're going to give you a little bit more height, we'll give you a little bit more density." We need to look at ways to encourage people to build that housing on-site instead of paying the in-lu fee, to make sure that we have a housing approach that's going to be integrative, that's going to make sure that people can aspire to live in every neighborhood of the city, and we don't just put all our affordable housing in one corner of it. That's the change we need to see. What we've been doing now hasn't been working, and we need a sense of urgency to address the affordability problem in this city.
Should Seattle build housing on one or more of its public golf courses? What about Inner Bay in District 7? Candidate Lewis, you take this one first.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm not really much of a golfer, and a lot of people can attest to that. I grew up in a household of golfers, but they were all left-handed, so I couldn't use any of the clubs. But I'm going to say this, you know, if we give up open space, we're never going to get it back. And those golf courses are open space. I believe in preserving the ordinance that we have on the books right now that says that you can't use that open space for any other purpose. The golf course in our district in Inner Bay actually turns a profit. It's a good use of that land, they're a good tenant for that property, and I would definitely, as a councilmember, support keeping that golf course there the way it is. If we want to look at maybe other open space opportunities for some of the golf courses in the city, I'm open to that, if it's for an alternative park use. But I don't think we should be opening any of our parks, including our golf courses, to alternative uses.
Thank you. Candidate Pugil.
Absolutely. Do not convert any park space, regardless of what its purpose is now, to housing. Out of the 30 largest cities in the nation, we rank almost last as far as green open space. Humans need green open space, they need sightlines, they need trees. That would affect our tree canopy. We have to do everything to increase our tree canopy. I not only would honor the ordinance that says we cannot convert that land, but I would try to get it into the city charter so it's bomb-proof. We need green space, and as Andrew said, if people stop golfing, let's do bike trails, let's do nature trails, let's do other uses, but we cannot give up open green space.
Hello, gentlemen. Should Seattle allow duplexes and triplexes on more blocks where only single-family houses can currently be built? If so, any ideas where in District 7 to do that? Mr. Pugil.
I would say that we always have to look at increased density, but the main areas that we have to look at increased density is on existing transportation routes and the planned transportation routes, whether bus or sound transit three. I've been doorbelling over 10,000 doors, and my volunteers another 11,000. The other day, if you guys get bored, going to the 1800 block of 8th or 9th Avenue West, it's the most hodgepodge mess of single-family homes that have triplexes in back, accessory dwelling units, detached accessory dwelling units, none of which are affordable, none of which there's parking provided for, and several families are moving out. And they're good families, and they love density, but it's gone too far. We have to involve the neighborhoods, we have to involve the Department of Construction and Inspections, and come together in a neighborhood-focused, what works best for you, the neighborhood. It can't be forced from the top down.
Mr. Lewis.
Yeah, well, so I've gotten out and hidden a lot of doors in District 7, too, all across the different neighborhoods. And, you know, to answer the question, Eric, about where we could include some of those more of those triplexes and duplexes, as I've gone around, I've noticed there's an awful lot of them that are existing illegally, they're unsanctioned, because folks have made them, and our current laws are overly restrictive, and they're not on the books. But I'll be hitting a door in every neighborhood of District 7, out in Magnolia even, or up on Queen Anne, and I'll have a house 2212 or whatever, and then the next on the list, 22 and 1/2. Where's that? And there's a backyard cottage right there on this block that has a whole bunch of them. The people that I meet in those houses are nurses, there are firefighters, there are police officers, there are the people that need to have a space in this city, and if they work in the city, they should be able to live in the city. We need to do this as a neighborhood, as a community, and we do need to have neighborhood planning about where the growth is going to go. Well, we got to stipulate that we got to make room for the working families in this city, we got to make room for more affordable housing.
And just to be clear, so you think that they should allow the duplexes and triplexes in the neighborhoods?
I think that they should in more neighborhoods, and I think they're already there right now.
Mr. Pugil, response?
Well, certainly, Queen Anne was unzoned in the 50s and 60s, and it got so dense up there, and it still is, where many people have converted single-family homes into fourplexes, that they rezoned it to single-family in the 1970s because it had gotten out of control. All you had to do was build the zone. So we have to make sure that the neighbors have, that the neighborhoods are involved. We can also convert publicly-owned surplus land by state law that John Wilson, our tax assessor, has mapped out throughout the city, and make that into low-income or affordable housing.
One more response, Mr. Lewis, if you want.
Now, what's the, what's the question at this point?
The same question, that's, that's okay if you've, if you've said your piece.
Oh, just talking more broadly about housing? Yeah, you know, I mean, one thing that we got away from in the early 2000s was neighborhood-based planning, because these conversations about where growth goes is something we need to do as a community. I met with Jim Deers, the former Neighborhoods Director, early in my campaign, and we talked about how when people are given a voice at the table, when they're given a say, when they get to decide and shape what their community is going to look like, those decisions are lasting, and those decisions bring us closer together. All these conversations about growth, I think we need to have more growth, but we got to be making the decisions together through a neighborhood planning process.
Last year, the council approved Seattle City Light rate hikes averaging 4.5% annually for six years. In 2017, the council approved Seattle Public Utilities rate hikes of 5.2% annually for six years. Have recent increases in utility rates been needed, and have they been appropriate? Mr. Lewis.
Well, what we need to be doing, and I've been talking about this from the beginning of my campaign, is we need to be doing more performance auditing in city government so we can get the data and the information to make informed decisions on whether those rate hikes have been necessary. And, you know, just to break it down a little bit, at King County, you go across the street, they performance audit everything on a regular basis, they have annual performance auditing plans, they've saved $127 million over three years through performance auditing. We need to have that same approach to the utilities at the city of Seattle. The biggest piece of the budget overall, or one of the biggest footprints, is the massive amount of power that the city of Seattle has in the utility markets, and we need to be making sure that we're investing in that infrastructure, we need to make sure that we're giving City Light the resources it needs to get the job done, but we also need transparency to know if those rate hikes are warranted.
Mr. Pugil.
I believe that they are warranted. I have, having been in the upper command staff of the Seattle Police Department, we had to work daily with other city agency heads and their lower staff to make sure that we were all cooperatively delivering the services that you, the citizens, and residents need. So I did talk to them, and I listened to them, and they laid out a pretty cogent plan. We still have one of the lowest rates of cost of electricity, and by far the greenest electricity in the nation, but we have to make sure that we are doing the best to make it affordable. I think we have to look at what age do we make these increases? How old are the people? Are they on fixed incomes? Again, listen to our constituents, there's a lot of people who cannot afford to live here in the city anymore because they're on fixed pensions. We also have to look at the infrastructure and making us earthquake resilient and quicker to recover from that big earthquake that is essentially coming, and that's what the money is going to go for.
All right, we'll move on to another question. Switching gears, this is a question about bike lanes. You've both said, I think, that Seattle could maybe use more bike lanes, protected bike lanes on the streets. Starting with candidate Pugil, where in District 7 should the next bike lane go?
Well, they just put one in across the street from where the key arena is being reconstructed on 1st Avenue West. They didn't do a good job of talking with the businesses. So now those businesses lost all the parking, and they're hurting. I think we need to do a better job of reaching out with the neighborhoods. We need to build more bike lanes. More importantly, look at the quality of the bike lanes that we already have. We have to maintain high-quality existing lanes, and we have to build out the lanes that we promised you, the voter, in Move Seattle. We have to make sure that those lanes are safe, that those bike riders are protected, but we also have to make sure that there's mobility for the buses, for freight delivery, and for the reduced number of people every year that are driving their car less and less. It's going to be a transition, but we have to develop alternative ways of transportation, including bike.
And candidate Lewis, where should the next bike lane go in District 7?
So, you know, this is a personal question for me, because I don't have a car. Like, a bike is my primary method of transportation aside from walking. I'll admit it, I'm a fair-weather biker. That bike is going back into the closet for about eight months, starting today, I think. But, you know, as a biker, I want to get from point A to point B safely. I believe in Vision Zero. The only way we're going to get to Vision Zero is if we have grade-separated protected bike lanes, or grade-separated or protected bike lanes, and we need to make a commitment to that. There's a lot of people in the city that use biking as a viable commute to get to work. They shouldn't be putting themselves in harm's way every time they go out there to do it, but we need to make sure that we have a policy based in pragmatism and not ideology when it comes to bike lanes. When a city, when the city goes into a neighborhood to put in a bike lane, we should be saying, "Look, here's point A, here's point B, let's work together as a community to connect them, let's not come in with any ideal route." The one that I support right now in the district, connecting Gilman and Marina over in Magnolia, it started as a neighborhood matching grant project, it has the support of the community, and that's what I would support.
And candidate Pugil, if you'd like to respond, do you see any daylight between yourself and candidate Lewis on this issue of biking, whether it's bike lanes or other bike infrastructure, or do you think you're on the same page on this issue?
I think from all the 25 forms that we've been in together, we both understand that there's a need for alternatives to carbon-based transportation. Bike is going to be one of them. The city's exponentially growing, but the, and the bike riders are not growing as fast, but they are growing, so we have to manage it all.
And candidate Lewis, do you think that there's a distinction here, or are you on the same page?
I mean, you know, as far as I can tell, you know, I mean, I certainly have a really deep commitment to making sure that we have biking that's safe, that's accessible, that it's a viable option for folks. You know, if that's what Jim believes, then I guess we agree.
Okay, well, we're going to move on to another transportation question, also District 7-specific. You've both said that the Magnolia Bridge should be replaced one-for-one, but where would that money come from, and why? And how would you get it for the city?
I would look at what the original...
Oh, and sorry.
I'm sorry.
My fault, but our order is such that candidate Lewis will go first this time.
Ah, all right. Well, thank you for that question, and I like talking about the Magnolia Bridge. One of the galvanizing moments for me to get in this race is I went out to that Town Hall in March of 2018, and not a single Seattle City Council member was there, and I saw a community that was angry that they did not have a plan to get that bridge replaced. And I said, "There's going to be a change, there's going to be some accountability," and that was one of the things that made me decide I was going to run for Seattle City Council. I'm really proud to be endorsed by a majority of the Port of Seattle Commission, and the Port of Seattle is going to be a really essential partner. They want to develop the Smith Cove Uplands, they need that bridge to get access to the Smith Cove Uplands, they should be pitching in to help us replace the bridge. I'm a really good friend of Representative Gail Tarleton, who's endorsed my campaign. She went down to Olympia, she got a state study to study the transit-mobility impacts of not replacing that bridge. That is the foot in the door to get money from the State of Washington, from the state transportation budget, that's going to come in to support us. At the end of the day, we're going to have to come up with some money from the general fund to support it as well, but we're not going to do it alone, we're going to build a coalition, and I will build that coalition.
And candidate Pugil?
I was working the day of the Nisqually earthquake, and we had to shut down this bridge with STOT. We redirected the traffic for months over to Emerson and to Dravos. It costs millions of dollars. It's now 17 years later, it's the same problem, we haven't fixed it. Magnolia needs three ways to get in and off that bridge, unless you're walking over the footbridge on the Ballard locks. So, and then this winter, when the Dravos was shut down for quite a few days, Metro had to, there was, there was no way to get off the hill except for the Dravos, except for the Magnolia Bridge and the Emerson Street Bridge. We can go back to the original partners, Burlington Northern, King County, State of Washington, the feds, and the Port of Seattle. I'm even open to naming the bridge much like we did T-Mobile Park or Alaska Airlines Arena. Let's do it Expedia Bridge, where all the cruise ships show up.
All right, and maybe as a follow-up there, candidate Lewis, I heard you say, you know, there are, there are other entities that could come in, like the state to help out, but that, that there might need to be a fair amount of city general fund dollars. You know, how much would be too much, or is, or is the city just need to do what it takes? Is there a number that you have in mind there?
I think what's important is let's look at the mechanism to get that money, and I think one thing I would like to see is there's going to be a lot of new construction, there's going to be a lot of new buildings that are going to go in in Magnolia, and we should have a policy where we're capturing the growth from that building, and as it goes into the general fund, we're setting it aside to accumulate for that bridge. Honestly, it's what we should have been doing since the Nisqually quake, and I think that we should have that kind of a policy. We should have growth paying for growth, and take those resources from the taxpayers of Magnolia that they're already paying into the general fund.
Thank you. And candidate Pugil, you know, on the Magnolia Bridge, we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars here, it sounds like, to do a one-for-one replacement, and other, residents of other parts of the city may grumble about that. You know, what are your thoughts on, what would you say to those folks who are in other neighborhoods?
Well, back in the 80s, we rebuilt the South Lucille Street Bridge so Beacon Hill could stay in touch with Georgetown. We built the 1st Avenue South Bridge with mixed uses of pots of money, and then recently we rebuilt, after much delay, the 16th Avenue South Bridge. We're now building a bridge over South Lander Street. We're all paying for it citywide, each neighborhood deserves good, affordable, and reliable infrastructure.
Thank you.
Let's talk about homelessness. The Durcan administration has dramatically increased no-notice removals of unauthorized homeless camps, but has yet to significantly increase homeless shelter capacity this year. What do you think about the mayor's approach, and do you think the city should continue removing camps? Candidate Pugil, we'll start with you.
We definitely need more shelter space, we definitely need more supportive housing, and we need permanent supportive housing for those who are mentally ill or have co-occurring disorders of addiction, along with mental illness. I sat on many committees in both the city of Seattle and my time with King County, called familiar faces. We need to get these people out of these terrible homeless camps, which are unsafe for them and unsafe for the people that work or walk around them. We owe it to everyone. I know, after being a police officer, how much crime goes on in those, and how often the homeless are the victim of other homeless people who I call, which is only a small percentage, about 8 to 12%, I call them the will-nots. They will not take any services, they prey on all the other homeless, some pretty violent crimes, and we have to protect everyone out there. Bottom line is, we need more affordable housing, low-income housing, and permanent supportive housing.
All right, that's time. Candidate Lewis.
Yeah, well, I think the first thing we need to do is we need to hook up our encampment sweep policy with more enhanced shelter. I get off the bus every day at Third and James and see everyone that's come out in the morning from the DESC shelter, there's a 12-hour shelter there, onto the street to wait to go back in at 7:00 PM in the evening. When we aren't making the commensurate investments in the enhanced shelters, where people have lockers, where they have hygiene facilities, where they have a place that they can stay and stay out of the encampment situation, all we're doing is moving folks around, and it's not doing anybody any good. Now, I do think a lot of these encampments are hazards that need to be removed regardless of the shelter situation. There are encampments that are on on-ramps for freeways that put the people in them at great risk of being hurt or killed. There are encampments that are in public parks, which is not an appropriate place to have an encampment, but we need to have a triage, and we need to have some priority in where we're going and what camps we are removing. Should we categorically be sweeping every camp without a promise of shelter? No. But should we be focusing on the ones that are hazards and magnets for crime? Yes.
Just want to be clear on this from both candidates, you do say the city should continue removing camps? It can be a yes/no. Candidate Pugil?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and a follow-up for you. Do you believe that the city should change the rules it uses to govern removals of homeless camps? If so, how? Candidate Pugil, you could go first.
What is the question again?
Do you believe the city should change the rules it currently uses to govern removals of homeless camps? And if so, how?
Well, I think good government always analyzes what's it's doing, and what's working, and what's not working. I believe the mayor and the police department, and Pete Holmes, are doing as good a job as they can, staying in touch with what the constitutional laws are and what the health issues are. Just a quick correction, DESC is a 24-hour shelter, it doesn't kick people out, those people go out to smoke or get fresh air, but that's a 24-hour shelter, not a 12-hour where they get kicked out.
Candidate Lewis.
And the response is on, sorry, can you remind me of the question?
Sure, I'll remind you of the question. Do you believe the city should change the rules it uses to govern removals of homeless camps? And if so, how?
So, I do think that the priority should continue to be for the city, as I said in my earlier comments, that we should be focused on removing the camps that pose a public health hazard, that pose a public safety hazard, and that pose a hazard to the folks that are living in the encampment themselves. I think that in some cases, we should, if there's a spot where there was a particularly troublesome camp, we should be making an exclusion zone there to stop camps from re-sprouting because they pose those hazards, and that would be my focus, and what I think the city's focus should be on the encampments.
All right, and another question about homelessness. Does Seattle have enough tax revenue now, in your opinion, to adequately address homelessness? When the Seattle Times asked you this question earlier this year, you both said maybe. Explain that. Candidate Lewis, we'll start with you.
Right. Well, I think the issue is that this is a regional problem, this isn't just a Seattle problem. The reason that I said maybe to that question is if we're defining it solely in Seattle's going to own this problem, and we are going to be the ones responsible for raising all the revenue, for providing all the solutions, then we certainly don't have enough revenue. We know from the Poppy Report, we know from the McKinstry Report, that we need at least $200 million more dollars in investment to adequately respond to the program or the problem, but we're part of a regional network. If we partner the city and the county, if we really start looking at the, how duplicative certain services are, that they're providing redundant services, if we make this a regional issue the way it should be and have a regional response, then we can pool our resources across multiple jurisdictions, it's possible we can do it within our existing resources as a city, because we need to come up with that $200 million regionally, not just from Seattle taxpayers, and that's the leadership that I would bring to the city council, because we can't just keep footing the bill for the entire region on our own.
Candidate Pugil, does Seattle have enough tax revenue now, in your opinion, to adequately address homelessness?
Yeah, I believe we were asked that question in March. Since then, I've done a lot of research, listened to a lot of providers, a lot of the government people who oversee the programs, and know we don't have enough revenue. Right now, federal, state, regional, county, and city money, we spend about $200 million. Again, Barbara Poppy, we hired her, she's an expert, she said you're going to need more, but you also have to hold the providers accountable. Right now, in just a city alone, there's 300 human service providers in one form or another. It's a hodgepodge, it's political, and we've only got about 10% to 15% of them that are delivering good resources and the gold standard, like Plymouth Housing, like DESC, like youth care, like Evergreen Treatment Services. So we have to take their models, build them to scale, and I believe then we'll have buy-in for new revenue and ongoing revenue, but we have to show a business plan to get that money.
Would you have supported last year's short-lived head tax on high-grossing businesses as a way to raise more revenue to address homelessness? Why or why not? Candidate Lewis, we'll start with you.
So I did not support the head tax. I don't think that head tax is our reliable method of raising revenue. I think there's a reason that we got rid of our old head tax, and that we don't have one anymore. I think in going forward, what we really need to be conscious about is, does that tax have a regressive impact? Could Amazon have paid the head tax? Probably. But if you're a grocer with closer margins, like Wajamaya, if you're any of these other businesses that was going to be affected by that tax, $275 a head is a big hit if you're an employer. The old head tax was $25 a head, just to put it in perspective. I don't think that a head tax is the right way forward. I think we do need to look at other progressive sources of revenue, but the head tax was not the right way to do it.
Candidate Pugil.
One of my platforms in this campaign is inclusivity, and that means involving everyone who's going to be affected by this new rule, regardless of whether it's a revenue source, a new policy, or anything else. You know, in District Seven, there's a couple of great markets. One is Ken's Market. It would have been negatively affected. What really irritated me, although this was a well-intentioned tax that was founded in what Barbara Hoppy in the McKinstry Report had suggested, business was not involved and the people providing the plan did not have a concise plan that business could say, okay, we're going to get good results. Everyone's going to have to pay their fair share. What really irritated me, though, was Dick's Hamburgers was going to be negatively affected. And that being my favorite restaurant in Seattle. And they treat their employees right. Good health care. They do education assistance above the minimum wage. And when they get hurt, it's not thought out well.
One more quick follow-up on this subject matter. We hear you both saying that more revenue is needed. I hear you both saying you didn't support the head tax. So how should the city raise that money? Candidate Lewis.
Right. Well, you know, as I go door-to-door in District Seven, one of the things I hear a lot from folks is that they're being forced out of their home because they're on a fixed income and their property taxes keep going up. We've got the most regressive tax system in the country. You know, you go to the big progressive Democratic bastion of Idaho and they've got an income tax. We need to be doing something differently here in Washington State, but I think we need to be doing something differently here in Seattle, too. I would support a municipal income tax, provided that a balance of the revenue is going to pay down our regressive taxes, pay down our sales tax, and pay down the property tax, as well as raising some new revenue for the price.
All right, that's time. And candidate Pugil.
I think we definitely need new revenue. How we get that, we're going to have to work cooperatively with the county council and with our state-elected officials. This is not an us versus them. I don't believe, I believe we need to revamp our regressive tax system. I need, I believe we need some types of structured incremental income tax in the state and then a decrease in other levies. But we all have to do it together, not just a municipal tax.
All right, thank you.
A couple of questions about addiction and mental illness. Seattle police officers say they aren't being allowed to do their job and they're leaving for other cities. Businesses are under siege. After 130 years, the other day, Bartel Drugs said, "We can't do it anymore. Leaving downtown." Camps in tent cities get moved. They pop up again, they get moved, they pop up again. Drugs are sold openly on our streets. Citizens say they don't feel protected. They don't feel safe downtown. Violent repeat offenders get arrested 40, 50 times, they get sent back out into the streets. What are you going to do about the drug addiction and the mental illness on our streets besides the standard answer of build more housing? What other ideas do you have for this specific population? Mr. Pugil?
One of the reasons people approached me to consider this, other than having worked and lived in the district for so long, was that I was one of the original seven founders of law enforcement assisted diversion that just yesterday, Lisa Dugard, our team leader, got the MacArthur Foundation Genius Award. It's been replicated in 49 other jurisdictions throughout the nation and other parts of the world. We need to take that to scale. It takes low-level, nonviolent, property crime committing, drug users, drug consumers, drug sellers, and sex workers, and get some complete wraparound care. But we need to take it to scale. We need to get more social workers. We need to recruit social workers who can focus on this hard-to-get-to, chronic homeless, chronically mentally ill, chronically addicted group of people. And we need to also work with the service providers, who we did in lead, and get them permanent supportive housing. It's not one easy answer, but we've got the skills and the ability to do it.
Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, I mean, one approach isn't going to work for every person. And everyone on the street who's suffering from addiction has a different story. I see them go through the municipal court. I practice in the municipal court as a prosecutor. And I've seen people go through, as you said earlier, Eric, 30 times, 40 times, that have unmet public health needs. And I do agree that we need to expand the lead program. The lead program is an excellent program. We need more caseworkers. We need more people getting out there. And I support all of the studies, agree with all the studies, that say that 61% of the folks that get engaged with lead get into permanent supportive housing, get treatment, get help. But Eric, we've got 39% of folks that engage with lead and it doesn't provide the substantive support that they need. That's why in my campaign, I've been advocating a municipal drug court. Because while we don't prosecute felonies in the city attorney's office, we don't have the power to do that, we do prosecute misdemeanors that are substance-addiction motivated. We can give people the opportunity, if they need more structure than what the lead program provides, to work that off in a drug court, work it off in a therapeutic court. We're not doing that now. It's something we can do.
There is a small army of individuals in Seattle who wake up every morning and tragically, their first thought is, how am I going to get my hands on $70 or $80 to get my drugs? We know how they get it. They ransack stores, they break into homes, they break into cars over and over again. Tell our citizens and our business owners how you will protect them from this group. Mr. Lewis?
Well, you know, a lot of the crimes that come across my desk are crimes of opportunity. It's crimes of opportunity because we don't have the patrol numbers in the city to adequately have emphasis patrols, fully staffed permanently in our business districts with officers out of their cars, walking a beat, building rapport with business owners, and showing to folks that if they want to commit a crime of opportunity, if they want to commit a car prail, if they want to go and steal something from a business or a Bartels, there are officers nearby, they know they're going to get caught. There is an effect, a deterrent effect, of having patrol levels and emphasis patrols on low-level property crime. I would start with that. I would make sure that no small business owner in the District, District Seven, needs to think that them or their employees are going to have to wrestle and evict somebody that's in their business causing trouble and not be able to get a reliable, quick, and efficient call from a police officer.
Mr. Pugil?
Nothing in there was mentioning the prosecutorial issues that we have. The police officers do a good job focusing on who the prolific offenders are. There's about 150 to 200. Years ago, we called them high-impact offenders, familiar faces, high-risk offenders. I don't care what we call them. If they get arrested, let's fast-track those cases. I have a plan to create a task force of detectives, not only Seattle, but King County Metro Transit and Sound Transit Police that police the same corridors, embed a city attorney and one of Dan Satterberg's federal or state attorneys, and let's focus on this group and build vertical prosecutions. Not a filing deputy, not a prosecuting deputy, not a deputy over here to look over parole or appeal, but one deputy carries these people on. It's only 150 people. We know who they are. Give them treatment, give them an opportunity to divert, but if they don't want them, do them the old-fashioned way and prosecute.
And along those lines, one of you is a former police chief, the other an assistant city attorney. In the final report of the mayor's police retention and recruitment work group, one officer was quoted as saying this. "It is beyond frustrating to put hours of work into a case to find that they either dismissed the charges or gave them a very easy plea deal. Many of these cases involve dangerous felons, which we, as officers, put ourselves in danger to apprehend. The divide is apparent. How do we fix the apparently broken relationship between our police and our criminal justice system?" Mr. Pugil, first.
First of all, the police officers, the men and women out there in the region, especially the Seattle Police Department, are doing a great job. I'm proud to have been there for 31 years and have been at all ranks, including chief of police. We have to get back to treating the good officers who do the good job every day very well. We have to quit using the city council. The entire city council continues to beat up on the officers only when one or two screw up and not when everyone does things so well. I was fortunate enough to be invited to the Seattle Police Foundation Awards Banquet last Saturday night, and it just reinvigorated me about all the great work that the women are doing. But we have to get the prosecutors out there. We have to get the council members out there. One of the things in the recruiting and retention program was walk in my shoes. Council members should maybe throw on a uniform and go stand at Third and Pine for a week and see what it's like, you know? And try to keep order, okay?
Time's up. Mr. Lewis?
Right. The same way that we admonish bad policing, we need to recognize good policing. You know, I could count the massive number of hearings that I've gone to at the Seattle City Council where, you know, sanitation workers, linemen, other employees in the city of Seattle are receiving awards or receiving accolades. But the Seattle City Council only pays attention to our police force when they're in the news for screwing something up. And as someone who works on a daily basis with the men and women of the Seattle Police Force, I can attest to their professionalism. I think that they're out there doing a great job in building strong cases. I am fully supportive of voting for their contract. I would have voted for their contract as a Seattle City Council member. I think that we still have a long way to go in order to get some more accountability measures in for the next go-around, that when we go back to the negotiating table. But part of being supported is, they went five years without a contract. And to politicize their contract process, that was a difficult situation.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Maybe we can actually follow up on that question, and it might be the right time to ask about the consent decree and where you each think the city is with that. Starting with candidate Pugil, let's, what do you think of the current situation where the city has dropped out of compliance? What should be done to fix that?
You mean specifically where Judge Robart brought up the issue of discipline?
Yes.
With all due respect to Judge Robart and federal monitor Merrick Bob, I was there when the settlement agreement was created, then, or now Mayor Durkin was then the U.S. Attorney. And they all wanted reform. We got reform. We were in sustained compliance. Or, and now this thing about discipline came up. There was never any mention about discipline. There was mention about good investigations. Nothing about discipline, but I defer to the judge and we're going to have to fix it.
Candidate Lewis?
Well, we're not going to be able to make significant progress on public safety in the city of Seattle until we are in sustained, full and effective compliance of the consent decree. I think that we are setting an example for the nation in achieving new standards of constitutional policing. And I'm very proud of that and proud of the progress the police force has made in reductions of use of force. I think it's clear from listening to Judge Robart in chambers that he really wants to see three things in the next contract. He wants a lift on the cap of the six-month investigations. He wants broader subpoena powers for the folks that investigate misconduct and appeal to arbitration. We've got to get those in the contract.
Oh, thank you. And also on policing, you know, you were talking about supporting the police officers. There are some folks out there, maybe future constituents, who don't necessarily trust the police department, have fears for a variety of reasons about that, whether it be around accountability for police officers or just fears about, about police department in general. How can you reassure voters who might feel that way that you'd represent them well and help with that issue? And candidate Lewis?
Right. Well, I think first, we have to have a community policing model of bulking up our patrol numbers. Folks need to be seeing their police officers walk in a beat in the business district. They need to be familiar with them. They need to be at a place where they feel like they can confide in the officers about the public safety issues that they are seeing in their neighborhood, the small business owners and the residents. And we're going to build public confidence that way when folks know they're not just calling SPD, but they're calling Dan the officer, they're calling Frank the officer, they're calling somebody that they know because they're in their community and they're building a rapport with the local community. That's the way that we're going to do it.
Candidate Pugil?
Based on the answer, I forgot what the question was.
But the question was, how would you represent and work with future constituents who have distrust or anxiety about the police department?
Absolutely. It's something I did throughout my whole career, whether it was Reverend Holly Harriet Walden, who created the Mothers Against Police Harassment when I was up in the East Precinct. We then gained faith with her and worked with her, and she then renamed her group Mothers for Police Accountability. We have to listen to the, what's authorized by ordinance and agreed to in the settlement agreement, the consent decree, the Community Police Commission. That's made up of individual members of the original groups that petitioned then U.S. Attorney Jenny Durkin to bring the settlement agreement in the first place. And the fact now that almost everyone says, well, the CPC has it wrong, I don't necessarily agree with that. I think we have to listen to those appointed representatives who are authorized by ordinance and let them have a say in how their communities are going to be policed.
Thank you.
Couple of questions about donors. Are you screening donors, whether it's business or labor, who have an agenda at City Hall? And if elected, what kind of limits would you self-impose on donors? Candidate Lewis?
What do you mean by the limits would you impose on donors? Is that a reference to Councilmember Gonzalez's resolution?
Yeah, the $5,000.
The $5,000?
Yes.
Okay. So first off, I mean, I don't think it's any secret that I've received a lot of support from Unite Here Local Aid, the hotel workers' union. I sat down with them. These folks are on the front lines of a lot of the issues around inequity in our society. They're working one job, two jobs. These are hard jobs and they're keenly feeling the pressures of being in an economy that's increasingly unequal. You know, one of the things that I told them, and it didn't feel different from any other interview that I'd been with, with any other group, was that I was supporting Initiative 124. I was supporting the workers, the hotel worker protections that Initiative 124 offers that protects them from having bad working conditions and work maximums, protects them from sexual assault in the workplace where they have high instances of that. And, you know, their support to me speaks to how severely they feel those issues and how much they see the difference in this race.
Candidate Pugil?
I think money and politics is always concerned, with all due respect to the U.S. Supreme Court. I don't believe that corporations or institutions are persons. I think that's really put nationally and locally our electoral system at risk. I'm glad to, although it's difficult to participate in the voucher program, I'm glad to have reached the maximum vouchers available. Thank you all for who sent them in. But we have to make sure that we have a balance. One thing against this max limit, I've heard, is that it will help incumbents. So do we want the incumbents to always have the advantage? I don't know. But we always have to keep an eye on that. And I think Seattle's setting a good example with the democracy vouchers and can work out some wrinkles in the system. But it's a good example, and it has been cited by both sides, Republicans and Democrats, on a national level.
All right. Quick answer round here. What is Seattle government spending too much on? Candidate Pugil?
Too much on?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. Well, depends on who you listen to. I would say that we're spending too much on some of the service providers that are not returning meaningful results to the mentally ill, the addicted, and the homeless.
Candidate Lewis?
I think we're spending too much money on outside counsel in the Seattle City Attorney's Office. And I was really pleased to see in Mayor Durkin's latest budget that she approved some new positions in the Seattle City Attorney's Office to take those cases in-house, so we rely less on counsel that's outside, that we have to bid for, that we have to pay more for. It's a better deal for the taxpayers and it's a change that we need to see.
All right. Which candidate for Seattle mayor did you support in 2017 and why? Thirty seconds. Mr. Lewis?
So, you know, I've got a lot of respect for Jenny Durkin as an attorney. I voted for Mayor Durkin. I think that it is, it's great to have someone who is such a big leader in the bar be leading the city of Seattle. And I did support her because of her history in, not just on the prosecution side, but also her history and perspective of being a public defender as well. And I like that she brings that perspective to public office.
What current or former city council member have you most admired and why? Candidate Pugil?
Norm Rice and Sam Smith, because they were straightforward. Also George Benson, Margaret Pageler, Sue Donaldson. I mean, these are all models. Jan Dragel. I mean, you, you can go on, models of people, and this was long before districts, but they listened to the people, and they actually left City Hall. Actually, back then, City Hall was a terrible building, so I would have too, but it was, it was, it was, they were out in the community, the community didn't have to come to them. I respect that.
Candidate Lewis?
So I gotta be careful, because I've been endorsed by seven former Seattle City Council members, and I, I know that some of them are watching here tonight. You know, if I was in ordinance in the 90s, I'd be a law by now, based on all seven of them supporting me. But, you know, I was a campaign manager 10 years ago for Seattle City Council member Nick Lacata, and even though Nick and I didn't always agree, I liked that you always knew where Nick stood, you always knew that he was gonna represent and hold his office with integrity, and he's just a great role model, so I think Nick Lacata was a great guy.
Thank you.
Would Seattle benefit from a safe drug consumption site? Mr. Lewis?
So, you know, I've been up to Vancouver, I've visited Insight. I think that the city of Seattle does benefit from harm reduction. I think there's some people that would respond well to a consumption site. I mean, the law right now is tricky on it. I wouldn't want the city of Seattle to go it alone. The King County Board of Health is the public health authority, so it should be with them to make that ultimate decision. But would some folks in the city of Seattle benefit from having that site, from not being in a position where they gotta leave needles in small business bathrooms, not being in a position where they're shooting up and dying in our alleyways? Certainly, we could benefit from it.
Mr. Pugil?
I was appointed to and sat on the opioid overdose task force created by Mayor Murray and Dow Constantine. I listened to the data. I'm a huge, by my history of work with non-traditional groups, totally support harm reduction. No to a safe injection site. The biggest law firm in the world, the Department of Justice would come in, we'd have to spend a lot of outside counsel money on defending it. It would be divisive. We should spend that money on medically assisted therapy and other harm reductions, including syringe exchange programs and counseling.
Should Seattle toll downtown streets? Candidate Pugil, we'll start with you. Should Seattle toll downtown streets?
Not right now. That's another regressive tax. The rich can afford it, it doesn't matter. The price of a latte is the same to everyone. The less money you make, the less lattes you get to have. I think we have to look at the negative effect it would have on our service industry workers, our janitors, our security guards, anyone who works and keeps the lights on in our, our building in downtown. Know right now, maybe in the future, if we have adequate transportation alternatives.
Thanks very much. And now that we're done with that quick round, we're gonna move to some questions from the audience. This audience member asks, "Both candidates, given that cities emit 60 to 70% of carbon pollution, what do you think Seattle can do about climate change? Do you think the Green New Deal is a viable option?" And candidate Lewis, we'll start with you.
Yeah, I think that we definitely need to have a Green New Deal in the city of Seattle. We haven't worked out the details, but I want to be a part of shaping those details. I've got a lot of ideas of how we can reduce our carbon footprint, because we need to be doing something different. This is a defining issue for my generation. We're gonna be living in the shadow of climate change for the rest of our lives. We need to be using more cross-laminated timber in the buildings we build. You know, Bill Gates was quoted a few months ago saying, "Any plan to reduce CO2 has got to start with the massive CO2 impact of steel and concrete." 14% of global CO2 emissions come from steel and concrete. Cross-laminated timber, it was in the paper the other day. This is a low-carbon way that we can be building more of our mid-rise development. I fully support it. We can electrify the entire city of Seattle fleet. We got a light-duty fleet that already has a good portion of it electrified, but not a majority. We can lead by example and replace through attrition every traditional fossil fuel car with an electric car. We need to partner with the Port of Seattle on the Blue Carbon Program. They're reintroducing sea kelp. They're reintroducing a lot of species back into the...
Thank you.
Puget Sound, yes.
Candidate Pugil?
I think we have to do everything to reduce our carbon footprint. There's no doubt that the science, the facts, the data's there. We have 11 to 12 years to greatly reduce it, or else we're all screwed, especially our children and our grandchildren. Number one, let's increase our tree canopy, and let's stop cutting down the trees that we have. We need those, and that's not just in Seattle. We have to work with the King County Council to get that done, and cooperatively with the 38 other cities in the region. We also have to protect Puget Sound, and I agree, work with the Port of Seattle, not just with the airplanes, not just with the kelp beds, but with the cruise ships that come in. Get those electrified shore supply. They're still burning oil as they idle there for hours at a time. We've gotta cut that out. Last thing, I had coffee this morning with some detectives. They would love to try out some Teslas, and we can electrify the fleet. No, I'm serious. We've only, we, we have 4,000 cars in the city, only 400 are electrified, but let's get cops and Teslas.
All right, another question from the audience. Would you propose bicyclists be taxed and licensed to provide revenue for the millions of dollars dedicated for bike lanes? Candidate Pugil, we'll start with you.
I'm gonna go inclusivity. I'm gonna go to the Cascade Bicycle Club. I'm gonna talk to the bicycle riders I know, including my son who bikes in from Ballard to downtown every day. What would that have on your commute? What kind of enhanced services, protected bike lanes, sweeping of the bike lanes? A lot of bikers, I don't know, I know, don't use the bike lane because of all the environmental debris that's not swept up, so they get flat tires. Let's see what could be done with that money. Again, let's not just tax people to tax people. The roads are there, yes, it does cost a lot to do the utilities and do the retroactive work to make a protected bike lane, but let's see what we're gonna do. Don't let it go on for five years, but let's get some good input from everybody, including the small business owners, the bike riders, the bus drivers who have to weave around them.
Candidate Lewis?
So, you know, I don't know about that, but looking at the news recently around taxing the ride shares, I think one thing we could certainly look into, we got an awful lot of these LimeBikes, we got an awful lot of these new bike shares that are coming in, and micro-mobility strategies. I think it would be worth exploring a modest fee on those companies that are doing very well, that have a lot of bikes out here in the community, where we could take those resources and apply that to bike infrastructure. There's a very clear connection there. I think that it could be a really good source of revenue to build out our protected bike lanes and make it safer and realize Vision Zero. And I'd be interested in looking into some kind of modest fee on those companies that are doing really well right now, to make sure that they're paying into the infrastructure that their company's bikes are using.
Another question from the audience, a rather pointed question for Mr. Lewis, but Mr. Pugil will have you respond.
Okay.
You'll know what I mean when you hear the question. An employee of ours was killed on the way to work this week by a repeat offender in a stolen car. As a prosecutor, why has your office repeatedly released these repeat offenders to harm and kill innocent residents of our city?
All right, well, I can't speak to the specific case. I don't know if it was King County or city of Seattle, but I am gonna say this, you know, every morning I come into work, we've got a whole new docket of folks that have been arrested the night before, and I make decisions on whether to file charges against a person or to let them go on PR. It's an immense decision and immense responsibility. You know, we need to have more meaningful interventions with these folks when they're in our custody. That's why in this campaign, I've been saying, "What we're doing isn't enough." You know, there's things that we need to be doing as a city of Seattle to make sure, as I stated earlier, a therapeutic drug court, where folks can opt in to a treatment, a court monitored treatment regime, to get the kind of accountability that we need, making sure that we have a high-risk offender unit in the Seattle City Attorney's Office, that can build strong cases on prolific offenders, and strengthening our collaboration with the other jurisdictions in the region. We need to be doing that. Public safety is the paramount charter service of the city, and we need to make sure that we're doing a better job.
Mr. Pugil?
That's terrifically unfair for the family of the, or the survivors of the deceased. I believe that happened out in Beryan or Sea-Tac. I was talking to one of the King County detectives about it, because I heard that that was a repeat offender. First of all, I'm, I'm sorry that happens. There's no excuse for that. I have said earlier in many more forums, I have it in my public safety plan that's available on the web, we have to focus on these repeat offenders, and get them, if they don't take treatment, if they don't take diversion, if they don't take reasonable offers to correct themselves, we have to incapacitate them. We can't, and, and do it constitutionally, and there's a constitutional way to do it, but we have to do it. And again, I'm sorry for the loss of that employee.
Thank you for that, and thanks to the audience members for your questions. We're gonna move now to closing statements, because we're quickly running out of time. And candidate Pugil, we'll start with you, and you have 60 seconds.
Sure. We, one thing we haven't talked about is gun violence. I've worked around gun violence my entire career. I've testified in Olympia to reduce access of guns to youth, to offenders, to DV batterers. I've advocated for safe storage. I'm very proud to be endorsed by the Alliance for Gun Responsibility, and I look forward to working with them and crafting local, regional, and state legislation to make our communities safer. The fact that they took vaping off the market, and it killed six people nationwide, there's 24 people killed every day through either homicide or suicide by firearms. We've got to do something about that. I was also very honored, when I was with King County sheriffs, to work collaboratively with the city and the county on developing the Extreme Risk Protection Order policy that all the prosecutors, and all the judges, and all the police officers are following now. But we have to look at gun safety, we have to look at gun responsibility.
Thank you. Candidate Lewis?
Well, this is a change election this year, and we need change in the city, and we need urgency to confront the challenges that we're facing. You know, I've knocked on thousands of doors across District 7. I share the impatience of my neighbors. I share the impatience of the people in District 7 to tackle the problems that our city is facing. We need to have a Metropolitan Parks District that's being put to work, rebuilding and retrofitting the community centers that are the hubs of all of our neighborhoods. We need to work with the Enterprise Foundation to build 5,000 units of affordable housing over the next three years, because we can't wait for housing affordability in the city. We need a municipal drug court to give folks the option to work off a criminal conviction through treatment. We need robust performance auditing to guarantee to all of us that your tax dollars are being spent correctly. As a prosecutor, I ask tough questions for a living, and you better believe that on the Seattle City Council, I will ask tough questions for you in the halls of government. I'm proud to be endorsed by the Martin Luther King County Labor Council, every Democratic organization in the 7th District, the King County Democrats, 36th, 37th, and 43rd District Democrats, State Representatives Gail Tarleton and Frank Chopp, seven former Seattle City Council members, a majority of the Seattle School Board and the Port Commission. Thank you. Hope to earn your support.
And that completes tonight's debate. Thank you for watching Seattle City Council District 7. Seattle City Council Debate.